Welcome to the Oxford Public Schools School Committee Meeting of Monday, April 11th, 2022. It's now 6:00 PM. Please note face coverings and masks are optional in all school buildings until further notice. Regular school committee meetings are videotaped by Oxford Cable Access and broadcast live on the Towns Public Access Educational Cable Channel 194, as well as the Oxford Public Schools Facebook page. Video recordings of regular meetings may also be viewed subsequent to the live broadcast via the Towns YouTube channel, which may be accessed from either the Town of Oxford website or the Oxford Public Schools website. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. Comments are limited to topics relating to the school business. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address. They will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes, although the school committee may hear comments on unanticipated topics. Discussion or action on topics not specifically listed on the agenda will be postponed until a future meeting date. So the public floor is open. Seeing no one from the public, I will close the public comment, and we will move on to our student representative, Ms. Molly Raymond.
I have an update about the NJROTC trip. The NJROTC cadets departed school at 7:30 on the 6th of April. Their first stop was at West Point Army Military Academy, where they took a bus tour of the campus. While there, the cadets heard about the history of the campus and the famous people who have attended the Army Academy. Additionally, they heard about the historical significance of the property and its role in the American and Civil Wars. They were able to see parts of the Hudson where the shape of the river and the high embankment made it a great defensive position for both the American Revolution and the Civil War. After arriving in Philadelphia, the cadets visited the USS New Jersey BV-62, Independence Hall, Ben Franklin Museum, Museum of Illusion, and the Philadelphia Museum of Art. For recreation, each evening, they had a game night on Thursday and a mini golf and roller skating night on the second night. Throughout the trip, they were able to work on team bonding while learning about our American heritage. They would like to thank the school committee superintendent and principal for allowing them to go on this trip. It was a very rewarding experience. The NHS induction is on April 26th at 6:00 PM. All are welcome. Cultural Enrichment will be hosting a fundraiser at Chili's on Thursday, April 14th. This money will be raised to be used for tips for the local guides for the tours and buses while they are in Germany, Australia, and Switzerland in April 2023. And for the senior class, it has been a busy month with planning prom and senior class trip. The prom is on Friday, May 20th at Sabrina and Keys. Tickets are to be sold during lunchtime. The senior class trip is on May 31st with a Boston Harbor cruise in the morning, and then a few hours spent at Faneuil Hall and Haymarket Square. They did very well with their meat raffle, and they would like to thank everyone who helped out. And we also have a fundraiser going on with Meadow Farms that is online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for our student representative?
That was excellent, Molly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we do have a consent agenda vote for our meeting minutes. We do have meeting minutes from March 28th, 2022. It was a regular meeting. You need a motion to approve those minutes if people have reviewed them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the 28th.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
No, second, but motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Number yes, five yes. Meeting minutes pass. Next order of business is central office, our business administrator. So Justin, if you want to come forward, a few things to talk about, and then the superintendent as well at some point. All right, Justin, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. As part of your packet, you should have received the budget to actual report through March 31st. As always, I just want to update the committee on a few things that I'm seeing. This time, I'm going to not speak to substitutes. However, another subject that's near and dear to my heart, utilities. At this point in time, for electricity, we're anticipating $55,000 more than what we have budgeted this year. We do have a contingency account, which I use that to plug the hole that we anticipate for this. So we do have this amount covered. However, that's a dramatic increase. I've never seen an increase like that since I've been here. However, looking at it, isn't necessarily the usage. It's our rate. The rate that we're paying for electricity has doubled. I'll put it that way. We've gone from roughly 10 cents per kilowatt hour to 19 cents per kilowatt hour. And that began about November. We started to see that trend when we did our projections about a few weeks back. And yeah, so at this point in time, again, $55,000, I think we're going to be short on National Grid for electricity. Now, part of that is the townwide electric aggregate plan, to which is a opt-out program.
I'd like to opt out right now myself.
We've, well, this is the interesting thing. We never opted out. Come to find out, we were not included in this in this plan. So we have been working with the town manager's office to get to the bottom of what exactly is going on. I know she has done some legwork on her end, and going forward, we will be back down to approximately the 10 cent per kilowatt hour that we normally pay. However, at this point in time, there's no going back for those heavy months we had, November through March.
So question for clarification. Is the town rate, if you're part of that program, 19 cents per kilowatt hour right now?
It's the market rate, whatever National Grid has on your bill. I'll put it that way. So it can fluctuate. For the aggregate program, I can't, I'm going to take a guess and say it's about 10 cents. Don't quote me on that. I'm not an expert when it comes to the aggregate plan rate. As come to find out, we were actually not part of that.
So that's the town plan?
Correct.
That you could have opted into?
Opt out.
Opt out.
You're automatically opted into it.
So confusion. Why was the school not automatically opted in as a?
It was.
Great question. That's what-
No, it wasn't.
Right. We didn't get the rate, but we were opted in because we never opted out, is what I understood. Right.
So that's what we are looking into, and we have certainly notified the town hall.
So we should have been getting 10 cents per kilowatt?
That's what we believe.
Okay.
And that's what we expected when we budgeted, and come to find out that is not the case.
Any chance of reimbursement?
I believe the town manager's office is looking into that for some type of retro rate going back. I'm not going to get my hopes up on that, but maybe the bills might come in a little bit lower for next year.
And do we still have our solar credits, and are we still being assessed for the lights that are on Main Street that are in front of our middle school?
Yes. So two-part question.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry. The, there are some streetlights that we do pay for going down Carbonco Drive that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily sure about on Main Street, but I am aware of ones on Carbonco Drive. And we are part of the solar program still. That is, that was a 20-year agreement, I believe. So we do pay roughly 80 cents on the dollar for those, say, kilowatt hours that are generated through the solar program.
All right. So could I just, so I have this clear. So we basically are being charged 100% more than what we had budgeted for for electricity. So if it was 10 cents is what we thought, right, and we're being charged 19 cents?
Yes. However, it fluctuates with the market, so it just-
But if we were in the program like we think we were, it would have been 10 cents regardless?
Yes.
So I understand that town hall is looking into that, but who is ultimately responsible for that? Because I would like to have an answer from that person, whoever that is, whatever board that is.
Like I said, at this point in time, the, I know the town manager's office is investigating this to find out what the heck's going on.
But who's ultimately in charge of electricity in the Town of Oxford? Does that come under the highway department? Who's the one who negotiates these deals?
I think it's the Board of Selectmen that negotiate the deals, if I remember correctly.
I'd have to look into it. To be honest with you, years ago, when I, you know, worked at the town hall, there was a municipal utilities department that was overseen by DPW. I'm not sure if that's still the same.
Okay. So if that's, when you get that answer through the superintendent, can you guys share that with us?
Yeah, we'll certainly keep the committee updated.
All right. Thank you.
Next part of that, utilities. Propane, Barton School. All the other schools, we have a national, it's National Grid is our, we paid for delivery services. However, we go out to bid through the French River program. We contract with Sprague for our natural gas. So we procure that every three years, and we get a locked-in rate. So we don't really see many changes unless there's an increase in usage. So that rate is very consistent. However, there is no natural gas lines up in the Barton neighborhood, so we rely upon propane. The propane, propane rate has increased. We went from normally $1.60 per gallon to $2.40. So for propane, we are anticipating another $25,000 more than what we had budgeted. Much like at home, you know, a lot of us are experiencing increases in the cost of utilities. And certainly, being a school system, we're seeing the same exact thing. It's just, it's really magnified as our usage is quite high. And again, we can cover this out of our contingency account in our budget. However, that really cleans us out. We don't really have much, any, any more to fall back upon, if you will. So again, that was another 25 grand on top of the 60 that we already budgeted up at Barton School.
Could you just say the electricity number again? Was it going to be an additional 50?
$55,000. That's for all school buildings. So we had originally budgeted $345,000 for all buildings all year. We're looking at $400,000.
So we've almost, we basically used 100% of our budget for heating of buildings. Yeah, I know. And I'm looking on page five of 16.
Let me, I could follow along with you. We encumber all of the funds to pay those bills. So you're going to see a zero balance, but that doesn't mean we've paid that much. If you look in the encumbrance column, it's a, or purchase-
I'm looking at expended.
And forgive me, what school are you looking at?
I'm not really sure what school. I'm on page five of 16. I think it's Barton.
Claret Barton.
I think it's the propane school.
Yeah, it's Claret Barton.
Yep. So we've used basically our full budget.
Oh, here we go.
Page five of 16.
Well, I mean, there's still-
We just follow along with you so you can-
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the encumbered money too.
So looking at the electricity line?
$485. It's not that much.
I'm sorry. Are you looking at electricity or propane at Barton School?
Heating of buildings.
Yeah, it says heating, supplies and materials, heating of building. 67K.
Yes. So we originally budgeted $60,000 for Barton School propane. About March, we anticipated it was going to be about another $7,000. Since then, we believe it's going to be more, like $25,000 more-
On top of the-
On top of the 60 that was originally budgeted.
Okay.
So we're looking at $85,000. I have not moved any money into that line yet. So we're getting $85,000 for propane at Barton School. The electricity line should be reflected with the new budget amounts. If you total the four schools, it'll bring it to $400,000.
I have a question.
Yes.
So not to throw the carpe per the horse, but where we are looking at talking about the budget in a little bit, have we anticipated the increased price of propane into our new budget?
Not for fiscal '23, no. Great question.
Thank you.
So the electricity, I just addressed about two or three weeks ago. Propane just came to our attention this past, last week.
But the electricity is not reflected in the new budget either?
Right.
No. However, just, it is a snapshot in time. So just to, this is based on our projection for this, this year, based on those rates. It may be a little high if those bills come down. If that rate, you know, was cut in half, it could be a little bit less than what I'm anticipating, but I'm anticipating worst-case scenario. Same thing for next year. If that rate is cut in half, essentially, this won't be a problem for next year, but we're going to wait and see what happens. At this point, we did just receive our March bills for electricity, and that rate has not been reflected in 10 cents yet. So we're hopeful that for April it will be. And again, definitely make recommendations for the, for changes to the budget if we see that there's a, if there's going to be a large increase. Again, it's rate-related. It's not the usage. There's a slight increase in usage, but nothing that, that large.
Mr. Burke?
So Justin, if, if the electrical rate does come back to 10 cents, and we know that's going to be next year, we've got that, we've budgeted for that.
Yes.
We have not budgeted for the propane increase.
Correct.
There's no sign that that's going to come back-
Exactly.
Down. So that's the one we-
We may have to make an adjustment to propane.
We may need to worry about.
Again, at this point in time, the electricity is expected to come back down. Propane, we'll see.
Right. Who knows?
All right, continue, sir.
Good news.
And just to kind of follow up on the propane, similar to our natural gas, we did contact French River to see if there is a, we can go out to bid for propane to secure a fixed rate for three years. And they said that there is a program available. We're looking into that now, just so we don't have this variable rate of propane, you know. If we can lock in, similar to our natural gas, because again, we didn't experience that with the natural gas, as that rate's good until November of '22. So, all right, there's no further questions. That wraps it up for the budget to actual report.
All right, audit reports. Is that you still?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Justin.
Okay. Also, part of the packet this evening, you should have received three audit reports. The first one is really informational only. It's a, the audit of all the financial statements for the town. I'm not going to speak too much to it, as it's more of a, you know, something the finance director on the municipal side would answer to. However, just a couple notes. This is just a snapshot in time, the town's net position as of 6:30, 2021. One thing noted by the auditor is there was a 4.8 million increase in revenues from fiscal '20 to '21. That may not be unusual, given COVID and how things were kind of all over the place with funding. However, they did attribute some of that to an increase in taxes and a large increases in grants, which is understandable. We did receive our ESSER-1 grant last year, as well as our coronavirus relief fund grant. And I'm sure there was some grants on the town side that would, would speak to that, that large increase in revenues. And again, this is just informational only. There's some information on OPEB, section on MTRS, and then it really breaks down the governmental activities and enterprise activities. The enterprises are more like business-type funds. Sewer Enterprise, Sewer Enterprise is the only one that really comes to mind.
Are you still on the first report, or are we in a different one?
Excuse me. It's the one that's labeled "basic financial statements."
Okay, so, all right, so we're on that one.
And again, this is just a report that it's really on the town side, but I, every year, I do include it as part of our audit package, so the committee can take a look at it. And again, if there's any questions, I would, I really have to direct you to the finance director for the town. But, you know, if there's something simple, please, maybe I can answer it. So with that, more school-based reports. I'd like to bring your attention to the, let's see, the end-of-year financial report.
Which one is that? This one?
It's a report on applying agreed-upon procedures over compliance applicable to Massachusetts school districts for end-of-year financial report. It's really only two pages.
Right.
The end-of-year report, it's a document that I submit to DESI in end of September, and it's used to calculate our net school spending, per pupil spending, and other metrics as determined by DESI. We're required to have this document audited to ensure the integrity of our reporting and our record-keeping. So, to the bad news, I had one finding on this end-of-year report, and it's, it's fairly minor. And it's kind of odd how the auditors address this, as they say, when they trace revenues from state aid, federal grants, and state grants, to the district's accounting ledgers. That's actually not what they're looking for. So a lot of times, when DESI gives us this end-of-year report, DESI administers all our federal grants. So they know how much we have received. And a lot of times, they'll pre-populate, excuse me, many times, every year, they pre-populate these figures. And a lot of times, they lock the field, so I can't change them, because they already know what they are. I went above and beyond this year and said, you know what, I'm going to match them directly to our general ledger. And the auditors advised, do not touch those. Please do not, do not alter those. They already know what they've given you in federal grants. Don't try to match it to your GL. So I'll take it. So that's the one finding I had received. I have filed an amendment with DESI to correct that, so it matches what they are looking for. But hey, lesson learned. Do not alter those. And again, in prior years, they've locked those fields, so I couldn't change them. But this year, they left them open, and then I took it upon myself to match the GL, which, again, they said, don't do that.
I see that as their fault, Justin.
Exactly.
So-
I have to- No, I'm- I was just going to say, for the whole audit, having one finding isn't so bad, Justin. So thanks for all that. That's a lot of work.
I was just going to say, like, I know how long it takes to go out to bid, to do all these different things that you try to do to secure things for the district. And so I would love to understand, like, when you were trying to match the GL, what was the thought process that you were doing? Like, why was that?
So our GL tracks every expenditure that we have, everything, as well as revenues. So everything that we collect through federal and state grants is also recorded to the GL. So I can see at a real-time basis how much cash we have on hand as things are coming in and out. So my thought process was really, let's match up what those revenues say in our GL, to make sure that they, you know, match exactly what our GL says. So again, the auditor wrote this finding. It says, you know, it's a little odd, because they say that we trace revenue from, from your GL to the, to the end-of-year report. That's actually not what they're looking for. They want you to leave the end-of-year report alone. They don't want you to change it.
Okay.
Because again, the thought is DESI already knows what they have, what they have given you for grant monies.
So those were grant monies for the, like, the previous year or whatever year, and we were looking, we were using, potentially, like, looking at monies that were coming to us after that time period?
No. What happens is there's a different, different time period. I guess I'll call it that way. Sometimes, it's called accrued revenues. If you receive revenues in July or August, you're accruing back to the prior fiscal years. That's where they belong to. So sometimes that can cause discrepancies between what DESI says and what we have on record, is really what it boils down to. And I'm not blaming the accrued revenues, but I'm saying, you know, sometimes there's timing differences, just crossing the fiscal years, whether they might have a different figure than what we have.
I'd love to, I know this, we moved past this budget to actual report, but I'd love to go back, because I saw, like, three things that, that stuck out to me, if it's acceptable and you don't mind.
I'm fine with it.
Sorry. No, sometimes I'm a little slow here. So I'm going back to Educare Supplies and Materials, and we budgeted-
Just give us a page number.
Yep, absolutely. It was page one of three, but it's on the back. It looks like it's, like, it's towards the end. So the report starts again after page 16 to 16. And so there was a budgeted amount and an expenditure amount, which was, it looked like 150-something percent variance above what we budgeted for. So I was kind of wondering what that was attributed to.
Well, just looking at it quickly, I can see that what was budgeted, this is clearly gone over, but you have to take it with a grain of salt. A lot of, what you're looking at here is all revolving funds.
Right.
So it's really based upon the usage. I'll call it, I'll call it that. For example, food service is a good example.
That I saw too, but yeah.
Where if there's an increase in the amount of food we need to purchase-
Right.
Sometimes what's set as the budget amount isn't, isn't appropriate, because we have to, we have to provide the food to students.
Yeah.
So it's going to go over budget. So it's really, it's linked to the demand of, of what's going on in that program. So specific to Educare, I know we had a change in directors. The prior director may have set the budget at, you know, a lower dollar amount.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then when the new director comes in, she or he may have a different prerogative of how they want to do it. And again, it's based on demand, really. I can assure you, I do, I do check the cash on these accounts, and they're, they're making money. A lot of times, we set these budget amounts to say, well, geez, if participation is really low, this is the bare, this is the most you can spend if you want to make a profit.
Right.
However, when that participation increases, well, so the expenses kind of go hand-in-hand with it.
And that makes sense. I mean, if there's more students back in the program and post-COVID, all that, yeah.
Could we just, just before you speak to that, can, can you just state for the record that Educare is separate from the Oxford Public Schools?
Oh, yeah, certainly. So these revolving funds are almost like, I don't want, don't want to call them business funds, but it's treated like a business. So you want your revenues to exceed your expenditures, naturally. So that's different from the tax money that we use for our general fund budget.
Right.
It's completely separate. And then, and that's why food, food service, Educare, these are all separate from our general operating budget. They're treated as their own little, little entities, if you will. So Educare, again, I can tell you that, that revolving fund is bringing in decent revenues, more than what they're spending.
Right. But there is zero tax dollars that go to Educare.
Correct. Yeah, that program, along with food service, there's no tax money that, that is used to run those programs.
All right, thank you.
So if I can just speak to that, when I was asked to do the budget for Educare for 2023, I went to Justin and was like, how did we budget $5,000 and spend 17? So to be perfectly honest, I'm pretty sure numbers were carried over from year to year. So the budget for 2023 was more accurate until we came upon some unexpected expenditures. So there will be some additional. But again, you spoke to the fact that the program is making money. The program is making more money, because we've had, like, 50 extra students come back. We're at 356 who are registered. So-
Wow.
The program's doing phenomenal, and we're expecting a huge summer. So we, yeah.
And I know that's, that program is a blessing for everybody in our community, and I know how grateful our parents are to have that-
So affordable.
Consistency, and they know that their kids are safe. That just jumped out the page at me. And there was one more thing, but Mr. Carnocchio, you started to speak.
Yeah, I would just like, if Mrs. Forbes could just speak to, just real briefly, how you're able to be the Educare Director and also a school committee member, just so we can get that out there. I know we did get it out there earlier-
We did.
But now, somebody might be watching, saying, how is she on the school committee and Educare? So could you just give us a quick snapshot of how that all worked out for you last summer?
All right. So when I came upon the Educare job, I looked into it, and as a municipal employee, being the school committee member who has a stipend, if you're going to take a second position in that same municipality, you're required to fill out some paperwork and go before the Board of Selectmen, which I did at the August 2nd meeting, I believe. It was unanimously voted to accept me as the Educare Director, because the program is completely separate from Oxford Public Schools. My role here as a school committee member doesn't really overlap my role as the Educare Director. And all the paperwork's filed in the clerk's office. If anybody's interested, it's all there.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Forbes. Mrs. Griffin, you have another question?
Yep. And then, again, I know this is another revolving fund, athletics. It looks like it increased. And again, I was just wondering, I know that we, our athletics department, they've, they're doing a lot of investment in, like, I saw this year, like, repurposing, refinishing, conditioning of equipment, things like that. I don't know if that comes into these lines here with allocated and expended funds, or, but it looked, again, like there was a big increase.
Specifically to Fund 475, there was a budget of $10,000. And you can see that expended was about $22,000. That's just, that's a scoreboard.
Okay.
So again, there's, there's plenty of cash in that revolving fund. However, the, what we had budgeted for operating expenses was only $10,000 for this year.
And that was here at the high school, the scoreboard? I'm trying to remember.
Yes, that was in the fall. I want to say we purchased, we paid for that. And that, so that large $20,000 expenditure is the scoreboard.
Okay, that makes sense. I think that's it. So you see these things, they jump off, and then, you know, later, oh, one more thing, one more thing.
Especially in these revolving funds.
Right. And then people come and ask you a question, and I'm like, oh. And then the last thing, it's homeless transportation, in and out. That's two of three. And I know- And I know that the state just, you don't necessarily always get the money that we kind of have to pay for these required services. But we do get some form of a reimbursement, but it's under Title I, homeless transportation from in and out. So, I mean, that was a very small increase, but still it's an increase. So I'd like you, if you don't mind, speak about homeless transportation and how that can affect our budget. Even though this is from a grant.
Yeah, so out of our Title I grant, we clearly pay for homeless transportation. Just to, to speak to the budget portion here, you can see that the from outside and to outside the district. So that's if there's homeless students living in Oxford that need to go to a district, another district. Or if there's homeless students outside the district. So we have to classify those two differently. So when we set the budget, we, we really don't know. We kind of just guess as to what it's going to be. And in our Title I grant, we set aside 25,000 for homeless transportation. Now, when you write the grant, the grant doesn't really care if it's in or out, but I have to classify it that way. So just to kind of put your mind at ease, yeah, it's 13,000 over in one line, but the other line has a $15,000 surplus. So we're within the total homeless amount for the Title I grant. Now, homeless transportation is something we're required to provide. We, we don't have a choice. So sometimes if it's not in our regular operating budget or we don't have enough, we, we amend the Title I grant to, to cover a portion of it. The difference being with, if you use general fund monies to pay for homeless transportation, at the end of the year, you do get some back from the state. You, you get a little percentage back and that does go back to the town.
Now, how much do you get back from the state out of curiosity?
Off the top of my head, I'd say roughly $4,000, four, four thousand to seven thousand. It, it depends about how much you spend out of your general fund.
And then, but that goes back into the town coffers, not necessarily to the school.
Now, for example, Title I, you can't double dip. I can't take grant monies and then submit for reimbursement on grant monies. So you don't see reimbursement on Title I for homeless transportation. So it's really only anything we pick up at a general fund. Now, the difference with foster transportation is we did last year, I think the school committee supported an article to, to get reimbursed. And that's actually going to go into a revolving fund once we see the reimbursement for that. And again, it's the same situation. We have to pay for foster out of general fund money. You can't use grant monies and double dip and get reimbursed for expenditures that, you know, things that you paid for out of a grant.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, that's it for you, Mr. Ladue.
Uh, just finally, I, one, just to jump back to the audit, one final piece of documentation is the federal award report for the uniform guidance. I don't really call it that. It's actually a single audit. So if you spend more than $750,000 in a fiscal year, you're required to have your federal grants audited. That includes the school lunch program, your entitlement grants, so Title I and IDEA. And for last year, it also included the coronavirus relief grant that we received. It did not include the ESR one grant, which I found a little odd, but maybe that'll be for next year. But I am pleased to let you know, we did not receive any findings on, on any of our federal grants. So when I talk about these things like submitting for reimbursement or period of performance spending within a, you know, specified timeframe, that means we were 100% in compliance with everything we're supposed to be doing with our federal grants.
That's outstanding because I know how difficult that must be with all the grant money that you had to manage and go through. And it was more than ever historically, so.
Last year was the most we've ever seen, well, since I have been here. And this year it's, it blows that way out of the water. It's about four times that, so. This year will be, is really the more difficult job, I'll put it that way.
Well, I give you a tremendous amount of credit for doing all this really hard work behind the scenes to make us so successful and being able to give the services that we're giving to our students. So thank you for managing all that money so well for us and watching over it.
Yes, thank you, Justin. Is that it?
That's all for me.
All right, thank you. Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Couple of updates. Thank you, Justin. I wanted to give you guys an update on the preschool. We talked about this several times. Justin and I had met with leadership from Millbury to talk finances and policies. And then we visited Corey School at Millbury. It was great. We had a great visit for their preschool programs. Since that time, we have sent surveys out. We mailed out 129 surveys to families based on the census information we got from the town. We also emailed it to all of our current pre-K families. We have 48 responses so far. We have asked for people to let us know by April 22nd if they're interested in a full day preschool. Right now, if anybody's listening at home, it is posted on our school websites, the district school webpage. Under latest news, you can click on it and take it. We'd love to have folks take that survey. It is posted there again, under latest news. Once we have all of our data accumulated by April 22nd, I'll give you guys an update at our April 25th meeting and let you know where it'll go from there. Most of our research, it, it really would be, the, the cost after you charge families for it and stuff like that is really about $50,000 per classroom. So it is not cost neutral. So it's something that's not reflected in our budget that we're going to talk tonight. But it's something we'd have to talk about at a future time if we did want to add that in to our budgets. But after you pay for an aid in the classroom, all the peripheral equipment, stuff like that, it's approximately $50,000 a classroom to your budget and your general fund. And that's not in the budget tonight. I'll take any questions if you guys have them, but I will give you another update on April 25th.
Mrs. Forbes.
So of those 48 respondents, are they all people that would be interested in the full day or are they just responded?
Right now, we have 30 that would be interested in the full day. So, so far, 30 would be interested of the 48 responses.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering if there's 30 interested, how many full classrooms would potentially be needed?
Two. You really want, probably two. You really want to, you really want to cap it at about 15 or 16 students to do it right, so.
I was thinking.
We'd need two classrooms.
So it's 50,000 per classroom deficit.
Right. And that seems large, 15. Is it not large, Ms. Forbes? I know you have that early childhood degree.
I think Corey could probably speak better to that, only because he currently has the program and a private program like what I had is completely different than the public school setting, so I'd rather.
Yeah, no, 15 is not unheard of.
Okay, seems large though.
They can, they can certainly vary. But I've got one right now that is over that in our school. It's going really well. They're doing great. I was going to ask you a question, Mike, and I forgot it.
And I think too, part of it would depend on how many students with services would be in there because we would be accepting them for a full time as well. Public preschools are 20, three and four year olds with two staff, so. Much better numbers in public preschool.
Could I ask what the other 18 respondents, what were the options? Either yes or no?
Half day, parcel, three days a week, four days a week, stuff like that with some other options. So far, 30 that are interested in a full day program.
Any idea if there are, if that includes any of our students with special needs? Is that on the survey?
No, we did not break it up by that. No, we'd have, that's, we'd have to look into that. Because special needs would not be charged for it.
Right, and one of the things you have to look at when you build the program is to have those spaces because EI sends in kids all throughout the year. You don't know when they're coming, so you have to have some room left in there. So even with 30, you could.
So we have five special education students with 10 non-special ed. It's 15.
Would the full day, would it be like Monday through Friday or is it still just like the four days?
It would be Monday through Friday from approximately nine to three, something like that. So it'd be five days.
It's currently only four days now, right? The kids go or?
The three year olds go in the morning four days, the four year olds, I believe in the afternoon, go five days. In the morning is used for IEP meetings and stuff like that. And there's a social group too for the kids.
I was just going to kind of ask the ratio, but I think you just explained it. So it's like a one to two ratio that has to happen, special ed to.
Ideally, yes.
Regular ed students.
Yes, ideally.
Okay. I didn't, I just didn't know what the law was, so I was kind of interested.
All right, anything else for the superintendent?
Okay, give you an updating again later in April then.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And then personnel, we have some new hires and then a legend who's retiring. Connor Higgins is OHS grad and he is our new technology assistant working with Katie and Phillips. He'll be around the different schools, but stationed out of the high school. Brianna Clifford is our new long-term sub for math at the middle school. Kristen Prue is our substitute food service worker at the high school. And Charlene Plas is an OHS grad. She is our new payroll personnel coordinator, working in central office with Justin. Very excited to have her added to our team. And we want to congratulate Rick Vincent, whose last day was April 1st. And in Rick's style, you could see him in the classroom visiting kids, saying goodbye to everybody, helping the kindergarten kids make their animals for their dioramas we saw this week, which were just awesome. The kids did a great job with those. And the staff at Chafee had a really wonderful send off for him on Friday, his last day. So we wish Rick the best, so. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions, personnel questions from superintendent? I know, I know I've asked this a few times, but are we going to be able to hear an adjusted ESR staffing plan? I know we had that two-year plan.
Yep.
I know as a member myself, I've asked that you guys revisit that, take a look at it. Just because we have people locked in doesn't mean that we need to keep that. I hope that we're looking across the district to see how we can allocate positions and money better. I shouldn't say better, more efficiently if needed. Hopefully we can get a report on that.
I am meeting with all the administrators again this month in groups, one-on-one. We are, we are talking about that, reviewing our plans. So if not, the next April meeting, definitely in May.
Okay.
So we're, we're kind of looking at everything, gathering all the information. And I don't disagree. We want to make sure we impact our kids as much as possible next year.
All right. Thank you. School committee business, fiscal year 2023 operating budget. We do need to take a vote on that. Currently, our FY '23 level service budget request is 19,300, excuse me, 19,339,254. That is a 3% increase. I know we've heard some things tonight that leave us a little bit, well, I should say, leave me a little bit not leery, but obviously thinking. So I guess I will open up the floor for discussion. We do need to take a vote to approve. Yes, Mrs. Forbes?
So I guess I'll start off with, we need to put in more money for propane. We know that. So we already know that we've got to reallocate, I guess is what we can do. And then my other question is, I know that the school committee and I had some concerns about two positions that were unfunded and had asked you guys to look into whether or not we could fund those. And if we've done anything, I mean, we know that the social emotional piece is so huge and we really, really need those positions. So those are my two questions.
I can answer.
Yes, go ahead.
So the position for the psychologist of District Y, we believe we can cover through grant money. We looked at our grants for next year. That's our plan for that. We're still analyzing whether we need the part-time therapist. So we're looking into that and I'll then answer for you on that at a later time. But that's what we're looking for right now.
So then I'll just follow up question. So if we use grant money for one year, then we need to get it in the budget for the 24 budget?
Possibly. It might be something we can cover with a grant going forward.
Oh, okay, great.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Justin, thanks to Justin and looking at all our grants. And he's our grant expert with the final procurement of what we're going to spend that money on. So we think that's where we are today.
Great, thank you.
That's our hope anyway.
That would be awesome.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the budget? Yes, Brett.
So recently I just saw posted a position for a, and I don't know if it was like filled, if this was what was here, long-term sub math teacher. I don't think it was, but it, it was something different. And it was posted for a math coach at the middle school. And I'm trying to understand if that was part of our budget for this year and if it's budgeted for next year and.
Was the math intervention at the middle school?
Yeah, math interventionist.
Yeah, and we haven't found one yet. We did just find, we're, we're able to hire a long-term math teacher for the middle school.
So was that part of our?
That was part of our ESR plan.
That's, and it never was filled?
It was filled, the person had to leave.
Okay.
So.
So we're in the midst of trying to refill it.
Correct.
And it's budgeted, it's in our budget for next year to continue it through the ESR plan.
It is right now.
Right now.
As Dave just said, we're looking at all of what we have.
Right.
And what we need for next year.
Right. So I'm just trying to understand because I know that math is a big issue.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So that's one thing I was trying to wrap my head around. And I guess the other issue is, I, I asked, and I guess I have to go back through my budget to better understand it and I didn't and I apologize, but I wanted to know, we eliminated, I, I believe we eliminated, and I could be mistaken, our map testing historically that we did. And we purchased iStation.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I believe so. I'd have to check on that.
Okay, so that's, that was from the March 28th meeting. That was one of my requests was to understand if that was what happened. And I also, I, I'm assuming we still have Atlas?
Yes, we do.
And that's a huge ticket item.
Yeah.
And I, I really don't know how much we're really using this and if there's a better way that we could do our curriculum mapping and save the district a substantial amount of money. I just feel like we could use the Google Education Suites and like something with group shared folders or something to that effect.
Tara's looking, Tara Trainer's looking into that too as an alternative.
I'm just trying to find places to save money, but also I feel like, me personally, I don't know if I'm really comfortable approving a budget figure tonight or even putting it out there without sitting down again with all these anticipated costs. I really feel like now that we've had the information about the propane and the electricity and potentially the preschool, and I'm trying to understand if there are any costs. It seems like there won't be, but for the new special programs that we're bringing to the high school for the fires, you know, safety, things like that, I think that's all through grants. But I really kind of want to understand all those components before I say that 3% is going to do it for our budget. That's just my feeling. And I know this was presented already.
Well, right, it was presented, but I know some of the things that, you know, I had some, some concerns with and, you know, we, we held off because we weren't a full board that night as well. But some of the changes that were made, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, but we originally had a 3.2% increase. The town came back with 2.5. And then we got it up to three. That's kind of where we were. In order to get to three, we made some funded budget. We, we made some changes that you had told us about and then we got the documents. So thank, I appreciate that. Something tangible I can see. I think I understand most of that piece, but I know that was one of the concerns. And the other concern I had highlighted in the budget presentation was the uncertainty of the collective bargaining that was going on. And that is a concern. So I guess I have two que, well, one question, and I know I asked you this last time, but I didn't write it down. When does this budget need to be approved by us in order to get to town meeting? Probably tonight? Do we have any wiggle room to the 28th?
We wouldn't. Like it to be approved by the committee tonight. Ultimately, you know, we would need your blessing for the first week of May for, for town meeting. If I can kind of try to dispel any type of.
Yeah, please do.
Uncertainties. With that said, there's, there's a lot of unknowns right now. Your biggest one is your collective bargaining agreements. That, that is your, 75% of your budget is, is staffing. So that, that's a big unknown. I'd say right behind it would be your, your utilities. But that is, that's one thing about the, how school, schools are a little bit different than town meeting authorization. So what we would be looking for is certification of the number, the 19,339,000 for town meeting. What happens within that number is up to the school committee's jurisdiction. So if you need to take, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul or, or to fund propane or whatever the case may be, that's, that's up to the committee's discretion and the committee can do that at any time. So again, tonight I think we're looking for certification of the, the bottom line. But whatever happens within that is, is really the school committee's call, if you will. So part of that, again, the biggest chunk is going to be your collective bargaining agreements. And right behind it, I'd say it's probably your, your utilities. And it really could just be the propane at Barton is what I'm thinking right now at this point in time. That, that's more of the 30,000 foot level kind of answer to your question.
So as, as our budget, you know, as our budget director, essentially, right, our business manager, do you feel confident, because we first went for three. do you feel confident, because we first went for 3.2, we were able to get the town to three, they were at 2.5. And with the adjustments you made that you, that you guys gave us in writing after last meeting, which again, I thank you for, do you feel confident? I'm all about trying to not rob Peter to pay Paul? Because, you know, sometimes Peter doesn't have much on him and Paul doesn't get anything. So do we have enough wiggle room to be able to, like with that three percent? I'm just worried that, I know it's only 0.2%, but what does that come out to be in a nineteen million dollar budget?
It's a substantial amount.
Yeah, so I'm just worried that, should we go for the 3.2, amend this? Or do you feel going to the nineteen point, the number I said tonight, will be okay?
I feel as though...
I know that's a tough question.
I know, I feel as though at this point in time, with the nineteen million dollar figure, you'll be okay. That's just my opinion on it. I mean, anything can happen at any time. I don't know if it helps, but we are looking at a, at a district placement, a fairly large one, to the tune of over $200,000 that could be coming back our way. Again, I don't want to get anybody, anybody's hopes up, but we believe that that could be coming. And also with kind of reevaluating our ESR plan, that also gives you additional wiggle room to do things, you know? So if you have a, for example, the psychologist position, or there are things that are certainly needed. You do have more wiggle room than just simply what's in this general fund budget.
Than in a normal year, I agree.
Exactly.
Yes, Mrs. Forbes?
So just two comments. I know sometimes our budget reflects current employees and we could have retirements that we're unaware of at this point. So I think that often comes into play. And then I'll throw this out publicly. I know the last, in the last few years, we have been given additional monies on top of what were initially granted. So we'll just hope that our town manager is able to do that for us again. Throw that out there.
But I do recall that we actually did give back monies too. And it was that in-between period where, correct me if I'm wrong, and I can't remember the exact figure, but instead of getting a certain percentage, it was, it was decreased because we did kind of give money back over at one point. And I don't have the figure in front of me. I don't know if it's going to come back to you, Justin.
No, I mean, just looking at the budget history right in front of me here.
For the, like, we were anticipating a certain increase and we did not get that increase at one point.
During the COVID year, we, we had a $100,000 increase, which is next to nothing. But that was, you know, extraordinary circumstances. I mean, that doesn't happen all the time, so.
No, I know.
But we were able to make do and there was, you know, we didn't lay anybody off or anything like that, so.
Well, we were very blessed. And I think that this committee worked really, really hard to not put money out there to vendors in particular situations that we didn't have to pay and that, that captured a large amount of money for the district that helped us at that time. So I don't know, but I'm just, I'm, one concern is that, you know, like, I want the preschool program, but like, hearing that it's potentially $100,000 that it's going to cost the district, I just don't know where that would come from unless it is from partially like the ESR money. And then the plan is we go back and we revisit that. But then there's a huge concern for me that math is more of a priority than maybe a preschool program because we have all these students that are here already that need certain...
That's our job as a committee, right? We need to do what's best for kids and then we need to find a way to fund it.
Right.
So that's why if we go in with this number, is there wiggle room to be able to do things that we need to do for kids? It's tight, but you know, three percent is better than two years ago when it was 0.55%. So we have, we need a motion, unless there's more discussion, to either approve this or delay it. Yes, Mr. Burke?
Just a clarification, Justin, process-wise. So we vote to approve this, this is the increase we get, then we start talking about the preschool program. You would come back to us with some kind of a proposal on what we needed to move or do to fund that. And just to speak to Powell's number of 100,000, I think the interest is fantastic if we have 30 people interested in full-day program. But you do not need to fill all those spots. I think that when Mike and I spoke, it was, the smart thing to do is to build the program slowly, to maybe do one classroom next year and then another classroom the year after. And while I'm excited that there's at least 30 people interested in full-day, I don't, I don't know that it's prudent of us to go ahead and open two classrooms next year. So it would be more like a $50,000 issue rather than a $100,000 issue. If that's the direction we decided to go.
Yeah, the other thing too is how do we leverage our new path that we have down here? Our early, early elementary path, correct? Or our early childhood path? How do we leverage some of our own students to be able to support these classrooms too? Which is cost neutral.
Well, they can only support as assistants because you need qualified people and that's what the salaries...
Yeah, I'm saying you could have more bodies in rooms than the two required.
Inconsistent though, because they wouldn't be able to be there all the time. And that would potentially create chaos in a preschool classroom when you have a different eight or two or three every day and be more disruptive than helpful, honestly.
All right, so who?
One last thing.
More discussion, yep?
So the only other thing that I see that makes me Larry and kind of very concerned is our numbers in the middle school. Looking at that, it's the historic, like, present fifth grade class that will become the sixth grade class. I've always seen that class as a very large class with very large numbers with very, you know, the students I think need, may have some more needs at times. And, you know, again, I'm looking for a lot of data that I feel like is coming from our superintendent in regards to progress and how each grade is performing. I don't have that data yet, but I'm concerned that those numbers are so much higher in that particular class. And it's been historically that way. So when you have a class that's running through a whole entire district that's, you know, much, much larger, I wonder if we're doing that class any justice compared to the other classes. They seem to kind of not get historically, again and again and again, because they're 24 to 25 in a section, which is large, especially in a middle school presently. I know back in the days, things were different. We had classrooms with like 30, but we didn't have the emotional, social, emotional things that we have now going on in schools. So I, I don't know, I apologize to miss one budget meeting. I don't know what the discussion might have been at the table in regards to that number with the committee. But it seems like it would behoove us to have another teacher there or do something to bring down those numbers, not bring them up.
Well, I think, and it's a good point, but I think what we have to accomplish tonight is, do we want to approve this number to go forward? And then, you know, again, the rob Peter to pay Paul scenario? Or do, you know, or do we want to advocate to bring more money to the floor? Yes, Mrs. Forbes?
So that was going to be my question, my last question. What are the chances that we can get more? I mean, if we don't approve it, A, that puts you in a predicament because it needs to be approved for Justin to move forward. But what are the chances that we can go back and say, well, we appreciate your offer of three, but we really would like 3.2 like we asked for? Do you have any?
Because this impacts multiple town departments, I'd say your chances aren't very good. Just at this point in time, I think everybody has their budgets balanced. And again, don't get me wrong, it's not my figure. I simply balance your budget.
Right, right.
And make it work within the figure that we're given, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Burke, so I'll make a motion to approve the current budget.
We have a motion to approve the FY '23 budget as is.
Second.
As a second, any more discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five yes. Budget number passes. School choice. Did I have to read both, Helen? Both of the... Oh, just there. All right, so this was another item, the school choice for '22, '23 school year. We do need to vote on this. I just will read because I know Mr. Burke is not in attendance. This was from the superintendent dated March 28th to us, to us as a committee. As you're aware, in accordance with MGL Chapter 76, 12B, subsection 4D, I believe, each year prior to June 1st, the district school committee must consider and vote as to whether the district should participate in school choice during the next school year. Recommendation, the recommendation is that the school committee vote no to approve school choice in any grades for the '22, '23 year. Rationale, we are entering year two of our district learning recovery and acceleration plan after the pandemic. It will be a year of ensuring we have the resources and staffing to provide impactful academic instruction as well as social, emotional in-building supports. Thus, with the need to focus heavily on students already enrolled in the OXPAS, the administrators and I respectfully request the school committee vote not to approve school choice for the '22, '23 school year. I do just want to read you the presumption that all school committees will participate in school choice. Under the school choice law, general law, Chapter 76, subsection 12B, as amended in 1993, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and to admit non-resident students through school choice. Each city, town, or regional school district shall enroll non-resident students at the school of such non-resident students' choice, provided, however, that such receiving district has seats available. The receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on this issue and then votes to withdraw from the choice program prior to June 1st, according to general law, Chapter 76, subsection 12B, parentheses D. The hearing and the school committee's vote can occur at the same meeting and may occur at a scheduled school committee meeting, provided there is notice to the public that this item will be discussed and that members of the public are afforded an opportunity to participate and make their positions known to the school committee prior to the vote. A separate meeting is not required for this purpose. A school committee that intends to continue participating in school choice is not required to hold a hearing or vote. Contains the presumption that all school districts will participate in school choice. So we did have our public forum last meeting. We did have no discussion from the public on that. So it's back to our board. I know we had a little discussion that night, but the floor is now open for discussion. Mrs. Forbes?
All right, so I have so many things to say on this because I have had many people reach out to me, constituents, as we might call them, taking into consideration the administrators who have requested that we not accept school choice concerns, you know, that I thought about afterwards. Really, one of my whole reasons for wanting to have school choice is the new programs that we're offering at the high school and having more students be able to attend those. And then I start thinking, well, wow, those are brand new. I hate to say this out loud, what if they're not successful? And we've brought students in for certain programs that then we're not able to continue offering. So I have a little bit of concern. And my thought being, do we want those programs to run here for a year before we invite other students in to participate in those? From what I've heard from parents, they feel that there are a huge amount of social, emotional needs going on right now in classrooms, things that we've never seen before. And when the discussion, you know, unfortunately, they didn't come to the public forum, but they come to you anywhere else, is that, you know, basically, right now, we're dealing with a lot of our own problems. You don't know what you're going to get. And I'm not, you know, making any assumptions or presuming what sort of students we would get. But it's been a really tough year for the staff, for the students, and for the parents. So what is my other point here? That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Cook?
So before we vote on if we could have school choice or not, would there be like parameters in place of like, we'll accept students up until like this grade or like what?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can determine the grades, the number of seats. Yeah, all those things can be determined.
I think if the superintendent was recommending that to us, he probably would have brought that forward to us with those parameters. But just being one member, I see, I kind of, you know, echo what you've heard, Mrs. Forbes, that our social, emotional learning component of our student, it's, it's very complex right now. The behaviors in our classrooms have upticked. I think our families are well aware that our students are struggling here at times, but we're not alone. It's every district. It's across Massachusetts that we see kids that are not always coming to school ready to learn. We know our population. We know our students that are walking in through the door. We know their families. They reside in our town. My first, I always believed that, you know, my, my obligation lies to the folks that live in this community, that reside in this community, that pay taxes in this community for the educational system that we are providing. It would be great if school choice seats coming in were giving us the same amount of revenue that we have to put forth to educate our own kids in this town. And that's not what happens. We get $5,000 per pupil. We don't get the full amount. So I'm always Larry, and especially when we have classrooms right now with just students with very unique needs. And you don't know what could come through your door. And you have to educate them just like everybody else. That's the law. And when those students walk in the door, you own them until they decide to graduate. And sometimes that benefits us and we get, you know, some very amazing students that have come through here through school choice historically in the past. And you would hope that that would happen, but I kind of feel like we're gambling at this point. And I don't want to take a risk to have a child come into our district that might be coming from a different situation that they're trying to maybe escape to come here. Again, our first priority should be to our own students. And if people want to move to our town to come to our schools for the new programs we have, awesome. But I also think that those seats to those new programs that we have should be first come, first served for the students that have been here through their whole educational experience and are our residents. And that's all.
Any other comments?
I'll just have one positive comment.
Yeah.
You know, when I think about the $5,000 per student, I think about how much we could use the extra $100,000 if we took in 20 kids.
Right.
So it is a, it's a huge challenge. I don't want to face, I'll just state my opinion since I wasn't here last week, Dave.
Yes.
I think one of the things we charged the new superintendent would do when we, when we brought him on board was to really build an atmosphere where people want to be here. We want our kids to stay, right? And I think it's great if kids from other places look at Oxford and say, I want to go there. But I think right now, we have to give our administration the time and the ability to build that. And I think we're in a, we're on a good path. But I think for me, leaving it to our students for now, and I agree wholeheartedly, those new programs, I think those spots should go to our kids. And then hopefully someday, it's going to be something that other people around the valley are going to look at and say, oh, I want to go over to Oxford and do that. But right now, I think we got to give them the opportunity to, to build that, so. Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to share my thoughts. I think most of you know where my thoughts are, but just again, I want to just reiterate that the presumption that all school committees will participate in school choice, that's what the presumption was back when this was amended in '93. I would like to share with you that the following districts all have school choice. Douglas, Grafton, Lester, Millbury, Northbridge, North Brookfield, Southbridge, Sutton, Webster, Huxbridge, Dudley, Charlton, Tantasca. Those are just a few from our area. All districts right around us, okay? All school districts around us. Oxford, last year, or this fiscal year, we have, at least on Desi, we have six kids coming in at $32,000, it says we have. We are shipping out $513,000. Ninety-one kids we're tracing out. If you look at a district like Auburn, they took in $511,000 or are taking it in this year and are going to ship out 238. So that's a $300,000 surplus, okay, compared to what they're shipping out. Douglas, Douglas took in 124 students at $925,000 and 65 are leaving at $423,000. So that's a $500,000. Lester is probably closer to where we might be. They, it was around 57 that came in and 37 leaving, but they still have over $100,000. So we talk about times where money is tight. You know, again, we control the narrative. We control how many kids come in each year. We don't have to open the floodgates up. But if, if we want to do what's right for pre-K and we want to have full, and we're talking 50,000, 100,000, I mean, if we need to find money, I, you know, Sutton took in 45 students. money, I, you know, Sutton took in 45 students. They're 327,000 and 20 left them at 128,000. So, that's $200,000. It's just to me, I keep hearing that we need more time on our own kids. We need more time on our own kids. Well, we've had time. Yes, we've all been through a pandemic. We have a tremendous amount of resources down here this year and next year. I just think the time is now. I know it's not going to happen according to the feel I get from the board, but I just want the public to know my opinion. I feel we should have school choice.
I just have one last point. So, if we want to be a Douglas and we want to be in these other communities that are capturing lots of students that are begging to come, if you look at it and you really get down to the nitty-gritty, it's because they have some excellent performance with scores and overall performance for their students. We have a very unique population with very significant needs. We are working towards delivering the services to make sure our kids get exactly what they need to get on the level playing field that they have to be on to excel. I am hoping that the large investment that we've made over the last year is going to pay dividends, tremendous dividends. I'm prayerful. When we get our stuff together and we see our data climb up, so we are equivalent to some other places that are around us, and I hate to say it because it's harsh, people will be clamoring to come here. And I, you know, I don't fault people from choosing out of our district right now. I really don't because it's hard to want to continue when you know that potentially we could do better and I know we're working hard to make it better. But I don't think necessarily opening seats is what's going to make us get that revenue back that we want that's going to pay dividends. What's going to make it so we get an investment with a huge return is just capturing our own children back. And the only way we're going to capture our own children back is by doing what we have to do here exceptionally well and we're on that path. So, I don't think we need to go hunting and pecking from other communities saying, please come to Oxford. We need to provide what we have to provide here in the best possible way so our kids come home when it comes down to it. I want our kids back. I want our kids to come home. I want our community to say, I want my kids to stay here.
But 91 of them have gone and six come in.
Right. But the six come in not from here. And again, I want people in our community to come and want to stay here because we are doing what is best for our kids, which I know we're all trying to do. But if we can get Oxford community to return to our schools, then I'll open up to school choice. When everybody in Oxford first wants to stay here, then I'll consider getting other people.
And just let me clarify because you made a point. I am by no means suggesting that we're going to open up school choice to balance the budget.
Okay.
But to balance this, absolutely not.
Okay.
But you bring in 10 more kids, that's $50,000. Bring in 20 kids, that's 100,000. What I'm saying is, and what about role model students that can come in? We talk about, we need to fix, we need to fix, we need to fix. What if we bring some other kids who now want to compete for some of what we have and maybe that invigorates some of our kids who are just going through the motions?
But what about our role model students that are presently here?
We have many role models.
Right. Let's keep them here.
We have one on the end.
Amen.
We have another one.
And let's keep them here by doing what we're doing.
But we have seats that are available for kids to come in and take advantage of the great stuff we have. And if we can reap the benefits of that financially, we talk about wanting to build our schools. We, this pre-K is awesome.
Right.
We need to fund that. We want to get our kids early so that we can develop the student we want walking across the field their 12th grade year, right?
So, I-
You've got to start sometime and each year on the board, we say, we'll do it next year, we'll do it next year, we'll do it next year. Do we have something different than every other district around us? Every district in our area around us has school choice except us. We control how many kids come in. We could say we're going to vote school choice and we'll have four kids come in next year, six kids.
Right.
It's not the floodgates are opening. That's not what it is and I think that's the fear that people have out there. And then I hear respectfully from my colleagues, because I'm a principal, if we have kids who want to come into our school, we should embrace them. We should embrace them. That's my opinion. Mr. Burke, yes?
Yeah, and Dave, I don't think I'm far off from you. I think that is the goal, to become like some of those numbers that you stated there. I just think right now Oxford is backwards in those numbers, right? We're sending a heck of a lot more kids out than we are having them choose to come in.
And I think it's changing.
So, I think that, my point was, I'd like to give the new administration an opportunity to change that vision of Oxford, that perception of Oxford and I think we're going to get to where you're pointing those numbers at.
I hope so. I hope so. I just, I feel like we have a moment to do it. I don't know why we're scared to do it. You know, again, the narrative of we can't afford it now, we got to, we can. We can. We have seats. And that's the other thing people don't understand. We have a declining enrollment and when your enrollment declines, you lose funding. And when you lose funding, you eliminate things. You eliminate things. I mean, we have programs in our high school right now that are barely surviving, barely surviving. So, yeah, we can wait another year and give the administration another year. It's going to be another year that goes by that we miss bringing in potentially kids who are going to do well in our district and bring our numbers up so that we can be competitive. I saw another hand, I apologize.
Yeah, I just had one, two, or five more points, sorry.
Sounds like me now.
I do and I feel like you because I keep saying, just to clarify where I stand on this, and I have had conversations with the superintendent regarding the full-day preschool and I'm sorry to everybody who's not going to like what I'm about to say, but there is no way that we can afford to take in a program that's going to cost us $50,000 when we can't fund what we need, period. We're not going to get enough school choice funding in to cover that loss and make any money, in my personal opinion. As you said, we could get four kids. I feel like we're doing too much too soon. We've had so much turnover in administration right at the top and it scares me, to be honest. The financial benefit of it versus where we are at the moment, I don't, and again, I don't think that you're trying to balance the budget and I'm all for taking in more money, trust me. But I feel like we're in a place now and to echo Corey's sentiments, we have to build what we've got and we have to improve on where we are. And I don't just look at the data. I look at the day-to-day and what's going on in our schools and what's happening and the things that I'm hearing from parents. And if those concerns continue, they will definitely leave us. So, I feel like, and again, I don't think ever every child in Oxford is going to come to our schools. It's just not going to happen.
Right.
Because parents have other preferences, whether it be a private or a religious or, you know, whatever. But I just, you know, I don't want to put it off another year either, but I just don't know that this is the year. You know, our superintendent is working hard and-
There are many amazing draws here, from the NJROTC to our baseball program that's a high-profile, to our theater. There are some amazing things that go on down here. And again, what's wrong with a little competition? What's wrong with bringing in kids who want to be here? Competition can help eliminate complacency. We're just very complacent at times. Like, we just want to try to live in this world that we're in and say, we're going to get out, we're going to dig out, we're going to dig out. Well, when are we going to dig out?
The sooner the better.
Why not take a risk and try something different that every single, what are all of our colleagues around us know different than what we're doing? Every single one around us is school choice. We're the only one. You're telling me that Douglas, Douglas has very similar problems to us.
Yeah, but they're-
Their numbers are no different than ours, not much. Lester, very similar to us.
But I would say their performance data, MCAS data, other data.
Very similar, very similar. I've looked.
I have two in the last day and I differ, I disagree. I think that in some respects, you know, data, you know, states differently and it can be maybe because of some of those school choice children they're capturing that are coming from other places that have diverse backgrounds, might make their data look a little different. I think, you know, ultimately, we're taking tremendous steps in the right direction. I think we just need to focus, like others have said, a little bit more on our children here and make sure that our house is in order before we allow others to come.
Any other comments, questions? So, this does need a vote. Somebody wants to, I guess I can read the motion that, well, I would ask Mr. Burke.
Motion to not elect to participate in school choice program for the 2022, 2023 school year due to enrollment.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
So, it's to not?
This is to not approve school choice. Any more discussion? So, the motion on the floor is to a not, so a yes means you would approve the motion to not have school choice.
Right. I just told Molly a no means that you do want it.
Yep.
Just to clarify, I wasn't telling her how to vote.
Any more discussion? I think I've just said my opinion clearly. Ms. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a no, three yes, two no, no school choice this year. Subcommittee, policy subcommittees, Mrs. Griffin, I know we have a few to review.
We have a few, to say the least.
But they're all bonds.
Yeah, so, we had a meeting last time in regards to our policies and we looked at use of cell phones and similar electronic devices by students and this has been changed. I believe that there'll be some updates in handbooks. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lucas.
That is correct.
And we thought that that was most appropriate because to have one blanket kind of policy that goes through the whole district when schools are different, with different children, it just didn't make sense to have it the way that we presently had it. So, that is why that was stricken out.
So, it's just removed?
Yes, it's removed. It is going to go to our-
Something new will come in.
We're not have to vote on it?
To our student handbooks.
No, you don't have to vote on, we're not, no.
Student handbooks instead. And then we do have this harassment of student policy, which we did not have before and it will be if, you know, if the readings are waived and whatnot, we could adopt this tonight.
So, just one quick question. Policy J I C K was the cellphone? J I C K is now the harassment?
Yeah, and I don't know if the letter on the top-
Because there was no, I don't believe there was a cellphone policy, right? Isn't that what we found out that we-
It might have been something weird with that. I know when we went through our book, we did see some interesting things and that does happen, happens occasionally.
So, that's not a typo. That was my only question.
It may, we'll double-check that.
All right.
But the policy is the, the wording here is correct. It's just, we'll check, double-check the letters on the top. So, that's for your review. And we got rid of computer and internet acceptable use policy here. Mr. Phillips came and presented to us and thought that we could do much better than this policy that we've had from the past. He's looking into updating the policy and looking at some things and I think this might be actually, I know we discussed two policies that would take the place of this and maybe we ultimately settle just on this one as a committee that's being brought forth to you tonight, but I will seek clarification. But I know Mr. Phillips is working on updating our computer and internet acceptable use policies and changing to this new format that was recommended by MASC. So, this is new this evening, the access to digital resources and we are getting rid of this and maybe there will be language again in handbooks.
So, could I just ask the administrative assistant, do we have to vote to have those two removed?
Yes.
So, why don't we maybe take a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to remove J I C K cellphone and I J N D?
I'll make a motion to remove J I C K and I J N D as policies.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion, a second, any more, any discussion?
Is there any, you have to waive a second reading when you're removing a policy?
These are the removals.
You don't have to read it twice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Off of the boat, Ms. Cook, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I'm a yes, five yes. Those two policies are removed. So, then the two new policies, J I C K, which is the actual letters that are harassment of students, I don't know where that came from, the cellphone thing.
Oh, okay.
That's the actual one.
Okay.
Do you want to, somebody want to read it and then ask, do we want to waive the second reading or do we just want to do a first reading tonight?
I'll read it and then if people want to waive it after it's read, we can do that, I suppose. So, J I C K harassment of students. Harassment of students by other students, employees, vendors, and other third parties will not be tolerated in the Oxford Public Schools. The alleged harassment must involve conduct that occurred within the school's own program or activity, such as whether the harassment occurred at a location under the circumstances where the school owned or substantially controlled the premises, exercised oversight, supervision, or discipline over the location or participants, or funded, sponsored, promoted, or endorsed the event where the alleged harassment occurred against a person in the United States. The policy is in effect while students are on school grounds, school district property, or property within the jurisdiction of the school district, school buses, or attending or engaging in school-sponsored activities. Harassment prohibited by the district includes but is not limited to harassment on the basis of race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military/veteran status, marital status, family status, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic backgrounds, national origin, or any other category protected by the state or federal law. Students whose behavior is found to be in violation of this policy will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including suspension or expulsion pursuant to disciplinary codes. Employees who have been found to violate this policy will be subject to discipline up to and including termination of employment, subject to contractual disciplinary obligations. Employee-to-student harassment means conduct of written, verbal, or physical nature that is designed to embarrass, distress, agitate, disturb, or trouble students when submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of a student's education or of a student's participation in school programs or activities, or submission to or rejection of such conduct by a student is used as a basis for decisions affecting the student. Student-to-student harassment means conduct of written, verbal, or physical nature that is designed to embarrass, distress, agitate, disturb, or trouble students when such conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with students' performance or creating an intimidating or hostile learning environment. Harassment as described above may include but is not limited to written, verbal, or physical, including texting, blogging, or other technological methods, harassment or abuse, repeated remarks of a demeaning nature, implied or explicit threats concerning one's grades, achievements, or other school matter, demeaning jokes, stories, or activities directed at the student. By law, while what constitutes harassment is determined from the perspective of a reasonable person with a characteristic on which the harassment is based. Individuals should consider how their words and actions might reasonably be viewed by others. The district will promptly and reasonably investigate allegations of harassment through designation of Title IX coordinator or building-based employees who may include principals or their designees. The superintendent will recommend and consultation with principals, opportunities to the designated representatives for appropriate training. Where it is determined that the discrimination or harassment has occurred, the district will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and will impose developmentally appropriate disciplinary, restorative, and/or correction action. The district responsible, sorry, the district will respond promptly and reasonably investigate allegations of sexual harassment through the designation of the Title IX coordinator or building-based employee to any reports or complaints or discriminatory discrimination, including harassment and retaliation, or other violations of civil rights pursuant to our detailed response protocol. Where it is determined that the discrimination or harassment has occurred, the district will act promptly to eliminate the conduct and will impose developmentally appropriate disciplinary, restorative, and/or corrective action. And then we have our legal references there. Master- Master General Law, 151B, uh, 3A, Title IX of Education Amendments of 1972, B E S E 603 C M R 2600, and then 34 C F R 10644A, A through B, C through 4, C F R 10645, A through B, 1, C F R, I'm sorry, 34 C F R 10645, A B, F B, 34, 5, 6, 7, as revised through June 2020. And then there's cross-references to A C non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, and the source is M A S C, December 2021. All right.
All right, thank you. That is a policy that we do not currently have.
Okay.
Oh, dear.
So is there any discussion on that? Does anybody want to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading and to approve this policy tonight.
We have a motion to waive and accept the policy tonight. Is there a second?
Yes, I second that.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook, Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I'm a yes. So J I C K passes. We do have I J N D.
Access to digital resources.
That is a new, um.
You want to read?
I'll read.
Policy, Mrs. Forbes will read it? Okay, great.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes.
You're welcome. Uh, policy, I J N D, access to digital resources. The school committee supports the rights of students, employees, and community members to have reasonable access to various information formats and believes it is incumbent upon users to utilize this privilege in an appropriate manner. Safety procedures and guidelines. Superintendent, in conjunction with the Director of Technology, shall develop and implement appropriate procedures to provide guidance for access to digital resources. Guidelines shall address teacher supervision of student computer or tablet use, ethical use of digital resources, and issues of privacy versus administrative review of electronic files and communications. In addition, guidelines shall prohibit utilization of digital resources for prohibited or illegal activities and for the use of other programs with the potential of damaging or destroying programs or data. Internet safety measures shall be implemented that effectively address the following. Controlling access by minors to inappropriate matter on the Internet as defined by the Children's Internet Protection Act, the C I P A, and the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, the C O P P A. Safety and security of minors when they are using email, instant messaging applications, and other forms of direct electronic communications. Preventing unauthorized access, including hacking, viruses, and other unlawful activities by minors online. Unauthorized disclosure, use, and dissemination of personal information regarding minors. The school district shall provide reasonable public notice to address and communicate its Internet safety measures. Empowered digital use. All students and faculty must agree to and sign an empowered digital use form prior to the student or staff member being granted independent access to digital resources and district networks. The required form, which specifies guidelines for using digital resources and district networks, must be signed by the parent or legal guardian of minor students, those under the, under eighteen years of age, and also by the student. This document shall be kept on file as a legal binding document. In order to modify or rescind the agreement, the student's parent or guardian, or the student who is at least eighteen years old, must provide the Director of Technology with a written request. Employee use. Employees shall use district email, district devices, and district networks only for purposes directly related to educational and instructional purposes. Community use. On recommendation of the superintendent, in conjunction with the Director of Technology, the district shall determine when and which computer equipment, software, and information access systems will be available to the community. All guests will be prompted to and must accept the district's access to digital resources policy before accessing the district network. Disregard of rules and responsibility for damages. Individuals who refuse to sign required empowered digital use documents or who violate district rules governing the use of district technology or networks shall be subject to loss or restriction of the privilege of using equipment, software, information access systems, and network. Individuals shall reimburse the district for repair or replacement of district property lost, stolen, damaged, or vandalized while under their care. The source is the M A S C 2015. Legal references, 47 U S C and 254. Do I need to read the note? There's a note at the bottom, the FCC regulations.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Note, FCC regulations that went into effect April 20th of 2001, implementing the Children's Internet Protection Act, that's 47 U S C and 254, required each school and district to certify compliance with certain policy requirements in order to maintain eligibility for Internet access discounts and other services provided by the federal government.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Again, this is a policy that we do not have.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept all C I J N D, access to digital resources, and waive the second reading?
We have a motion to accept and waive the second reading. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So my only concern or question or comment would be, um, under the per, the damages section, individuals shall reimburse the district for repair or replacement of district property lost, stolen, damaged, or vandalized while under their care. Are we really enforcing that? I know that we typically have that insurance policy that you can buy for thirty dollars and it covers everything unless it's malicious damage that's intentional. I wonder if that's enforceable and if in fact it is enforceable because all families are not potentially able to afford to replace a Chromebook, for example. Um, I totally get that for a staff member who is responsible and should be held accountable. I'm not sure about that first grader or third grader. Um, and are the parents really going to be able to comply with that? That would be my only comment.
It's a good comment.
So I think if I've been paying attention to our legal sessions well enough, uh, the shall gives us a little more wiggle room than the will.
Okay.
So where it says shall reimburse, that gives us the right to maybe go after someone who's purposely damaged something as opposed to something accidentally happened? Or are we taking consideration of a family's financial situation when we say?
So can I be picky on the word? I prefer may for exactly that reason. Shall still to me implies, shall and will are kind of the same. May gives you a little flexibility because you may, or you may not. As opposed, I feel like shall is affirmative.
So we have a motion and a second. Do you want to rescind the motion in the second and then make that adjustment to that one word? May instead of shall?
Again, I'm going back to what I heard Mark say in one of our meetings. The shall was the word that gave us wiggle room. I don't know if the may.
And this is?
You said you wanted to say may, so individuals may reimburse?
May be required to reimburse. It would have to be reworded a little bit, but.
My, my, my legal knowledge has been.
Mark says shall, okay.
Brought to the end.
Don't rescind the motion. We'll talk to Mark about that Thursday.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
I guess the only other discussion is if you find something different that you'd like to bring back to us. I know that we always can look at the policy again.
Yeah, I just hate to have policies that we don't enforce. That's all.
Me too. Hence the reason we got rid of these things.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of other good stuff in there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes.
And this is approved by M A S C's legal, just to give you peace of mind, too.
All right. Any more discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I'm a yes, five yes. So the two new policies passed, the two new removals passed as well. Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee, Burke and Mrs. Forbes?
Yes, so we have a tentative agreement with our. What's the right term for that union?
Paraprofessionals?
IAs, paraprofessionals that.
Paraprofessionals?
Yeah. Is that the right, I just don't use the right term.
Yeah, we change it. Isn't that one of them?
Yeah.
You wanted to change it to paraprofessionals?
So we're hoping that possibly at our next meeting, we'll be bringing something forward for a vote. And then we have ongoing negotiations with the teachers' union and the.
Secretaries.
Secretaries and cooks, yeah.
All right. School Buildings and Safety Subcommittee, nothing from Molly and myself. District Accountability and Curriculum, Pal and Cory?
There will be a, a follow-up report from our superintendent, I believe he said in May, in regards to data.
Yes.
Okay. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion?
We always have something to say.
Yes, number Molly.
So we had to cancel our last meeting. Unfortunately, we have a very large group and we weren't able to meet a quorum two months in a row, so I ran a meeting of one month that was not actually a legal meeting. Uh, because of that, it was recommended that we cancel our last meeting. So we do have a meeting this week on Wednesday, um, six o'clock. But one thing I wanted to point out was the G S A here at Oxford High School. We had many discussions with them about the name maybe not fitting 2022. So they did notify us that they have decided, determined, voted on, and accepted a new name, uh, which they will begin using immediately because I've already received emails with that name. And it is the Equity Alliance as opposed to the Gay Street Alliance. So it includes all groups. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Griffin, we do have a warrant report?
So we have a warrant report for this evening, April 11th, 2022. Um, there was three warrants signed, so a payroll warrant dated March 31st, 2022, for $678,763.2. An accounts payable warrant dated April 5th, 2022, for $61,264.70. And an accounts payable warrant dated April 12th, 2022, for $83,254.91. And that is all.
Thank you very much. Members Forum, Ms. Cook? Mrs. Forbes?
Of course. Um, so I do want to just shout out to Mica, who is an Eagle Scout. I'm not sure if anybody had the opportunity to attend the dedication that was done at the American Legion. And she's not here, she's not a student here in Oxford, but she's a part of an all-girl Eagle Scout troop. That was all present there. And there's a beautiful bench and some plaques for, um, what she felt were, um, veterans who served in Gulf War, um, Iraq, not Iraq, Afghanistan, and is it Iraq, the third one? I think. But she felt that they were underrepresented, so she had gone to the Legion and made a nice plaque. And there was beautiful dedication. A lot of people from the town were there. Um, so congratulations to her. That was a great accomplishment. And I also wanted to comment on the meat raffle for the class of 2022. It was a lot of fun. We made a lot of money. And I thank Ms. Pimentel for all that she has done to work towards, you know, getting these kids out of here with a little bit of money. And, uh, I appreciate all of her efforts and the parents who participated in that as well. And thanks to the Policy Committee and all of your work every time we meet.
They are great people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're very blessed.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Mrs. Griffin?
Well, I've been giving our superintendent probably a run for his money. And he's a very patient, wonderful man to listen to all my woes. No, oh, yes, he is. Trust me, trust me.
We know you. We don't have to trust you.
I don't see any gray here there yet, which is a miracle. It's coming. But I've been, I get very concerned about data. And it's an issue I have because it's something I heavily rely on in my own practice. And I've been giving my superintendent over here a lot of grief. I know we got rid of our map data. We had all that testing we did for years. I personally love those reports. And I miss them as parents, as a parent. And I know we have our iStation data and some other data that's going to come to us. But I, I personally would like, and I know it's coming, and I'm trying to be patient, just to hear that vision. How are we going to be using all this data that we're capturing in this district? And I know it will be in the upcoming report, but I, I really want, um, personally, parents, students, and, um, all key stakeholders, teachers, whoever's involved in the education of our children, to really be involved with the data. Because if we're going to be spending the money that we're spending for these programs, um, to capture said data, and we're going to, and take our children and put them through the process of gathering said data, I want to see it personally. And I want every parent to see their own child's data. So I'm uncomfortable with that and, um, I'm just publicly stating it. Um, the other thing that's made me a little concerned, and I did, our poor superintendent, again, I know it's making him concerned, too. And, um, it's the dynamics here at the high school with our students right now with, I think emotionally, they're having a tough time. Um, and there were some behaviors that I know that people are aware of in the community. But, um, when my children come home multiple days in a row and say that there's been unrest in the school, at the high school with conduct, I just have no tolerance for that. I really don't. I feel like our schools need to be a safe, productive learning environment. And when I send my children here, um, to any of the schools, I don't like to hear them coming home and sharing that they had a, um, that they witnessed something that was uncomfortable for them to see. And I know that our kids are struggling and we're not alone. Every district has this right now. And I know we're trying to do things to help curtail these behaviors. But I, there was just too much in one week for me to see. And I really, I don't know what we can do to do better, but I feel like I, if I didn't say that publicly tonight, that I am looking for a way for us to do better. And I feel like we probably all have that same sentiment. I'd like an update, like, what are we going to do? Because what we're doing now just doesn't seem to be working. That's just my opinion. And that's it. Heavy stuff, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
I'll lighten it up a little bit.
Thank you.
I want to heap a little praise on Justin tonight. I think, thanks for staying. We've watched him through our negotiation process and the tasks we've put him through. And it's amazing what he comes out with and how his mind works. Mine, mine does not work anywhere near that. But to have that shown tonight in those audit reports, Justin, was extremely impressive. So I thank you for what you do. That's all I got.
Yeah, um, well said, Mr. Burke. I, I think, you know, when we get into our professions, I know as a principal, superintendent, teacher, whatever we do, there's so many things that get thrown at us. And I know as a business manager, I saw it when I was an employee here. I see it in my district as well. It's not just all about the numbers, unfortunately. They take on all different roles at times. And, um, I do want to commend you too, Justin, for your hard work, your effort. I know behind the scenes, I believe you and Helen have been doing a lot on the payroll, too. So it was really, really great to hear that we do have a payroll person that we have hired to take something off of your plates. Both of you work extremely hard and both of you are huge, both you and Helen, huge to our district. So I thank you both for all of your efforts each and every day. And, um, you know, I, I've had a lot of teachers into, over the, in my career come to me. And it's always the people who do so, do, do their job so well, always get asked to take on more. And I know that can get draining and I know that can, um, take effect. But I just want you both to know, as, as a board member, we, I see what you do and I know my colleagues do. Keep up, yeah, keep up, keep up the good work. And we thank you for all that you're doing.
Hundred percent.
I know, I know, I, I know I said at a couple of meetings this year that, you know, if you want a problem fixed, don't take it to Facebook. But I can say I've been a little bit more active on the forum because I, I feel I want to be a, get the story out there and tell it. So I just want to share with my colleagues that I saw a post on the, um, forum over the weekend that somebody had posted, members of the Select Board, School Committee, Planning Board, Town Administrator, and Finance Department spent time at the Grafton Senior Center this morning. Discussions ranged from the, a parking lot to building projects at the senior center, all different types of conversations that were going on. And then somebody chimed in, oh, yeah, like this will ever happen in Oxford. So that's when I chimed in and said, you know what? Thanks for sharing that. I think his name was Bill. He's not the one who made the comment. I said, I think it's an amazing idea. I'm going to reach out to, to the colleagues on the board, which I did. I crafted an email. Unfortunately, I can't find any of their email addresses. It was a challenge. So I forwarded to Helen and Helen has shared it off with the town manager and some of the boards and the committees. So if any of our fellow colleagues are listening tonight, I would like us to get together, figure out a way we can meet with our seniors, have us have a kind of an informal conversation. I think transparency, relationship building, trust are huge. I think transparency, relationship building, trust are huge, and I think this town needs more of that. I read between the lines and a lot of things I see, and, you know, there's a lot of right or wrong perception of people don't trust each other, the towns, residents, to the committees, you know, we would love to have more people here, we've done a few forums, we've had some people show up, I think it's really important that we engage with the community outside of meetings as well, so I hope to hear from the town manager and some of our committee members and board members, so that we can get this meeting started. Yes, Mrs. Forbes?
Do we have another coffee and conversation date on our calendars?
I think we had talked about two this year, and we weren't going to, but we can certainly explore one at the end of the year, I would love to do maybe something outside.
Right.
And, but we can bring it up and certainly schedule one for, you know, the end of the year, and kind of see how people's year went, and things to be looking for for the new year, yeah, I think it's a good idea, I'd like to do another one.
Maybe right after the election.
Yeah, yeah, you know, weather's nice, we could, you know, just go outside at Carbuncle maybe, or maybe in the courtyard here at the high school or something. And I think that was it for me. Future, oh, final public comment, I don't see anybody, I'll open the floor for public comment, I will now close the floor for public comment. Future business, our next regular meeting is Monday, April 25th. If you have any future agenda topics, please email me, so we can get that to Helen soon. I know superintendent is going to be sending us his evidence.
Friday, April 15.
Right, so everyone has the deadlines.
Thank you.
Hopefully going to spend some of my April vacation working on some of this. I think that is it for me, any other topics of discussion? No? All right, we do need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes. Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Number yes, five yes, thank you very much, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.